Good afternoon.
Oh, you have to hit the gavel. There's another one coming.
Good afternoon. This eighty-sixth regular meeting of the seventy-third term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. As a reminder for members, the press, and members of the public in attendance, we are asking all attendees to take this opportunity to silence any electric devices you may have, including cell phones. Everyone, please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We now have a special recognition for our city council, our, excuse me, we now have a special recognition for our Baltimore City Teacher of the Year Award winner, and I yield the floor to Councilman Zeke Cohen.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. And while I will never correct you, I will correct the record and say that Catlock Jones is not only the Baltimore City Teacher of the Year, she is the Maryland Teacher of the Year as well.
So you, would you like to come up?
Yeah. Can we do extend floor privileges?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Madam Vice President and members of the council, it is such an honor to stand with my friend, Catlock Jones. She's a teacher, wonderful teacher, at Hampstead Hill Academy. Her students have done tremendously well. They lead not only the city, but the state. They are some of the best and brightest that I've ever met. I had the immense pleasure of getting to guest teach a class where we taught about mental health and well-being. And Kat is able to imprint so much of herself into her students, into the school, into just making Baltimore a great place to be for the young people that are in her classroom. And I'll just say, before reading the resolution, you know, people talk a lot of trash about Baltimore City Public Schools. We all hear it, we know it, but the reality is that to be a teacher in city schools takes immense grit and toughness and resilience. And I just want to say that we not only have the Teacher of the Year for the city, we have the Teacher of the Year for the state. And this is not the first time this has happened. Baltimore City teachers are some of the best in the business. It takes enormous heart and hustle and chutzpah to do this work. And I am truly, truly grateful to my friend and one of our real leaders in the city of Baltimore, Catlock Jones. And with that, I will read this resolution. Be it hereby known to all that the City of Baltimore, City Council of Baltimore offers its sincerest congratulations to Kat Jones in recognition of your service to Baltimore's children and to being Maryland Teacher of the Year. The entire membership extends best wishes on this memorable occasion and directs this resolution to be presented this twenty-first day of October twenty-fourth. Signed Nicholas J. Mosby, Council President, and myself, City Councilman Zeke Cohen, and all of the members. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Awesome. Thank you guys so much. As much as we remember all the amazing things that teachers do in students' lives, I really am here because of the teachers in my life. I came to Baltimore in 2013, and in 2014, I met someone who had a nonprofit called The Intersection, who made such a difference in my life. So Zeke, thank you so much. And then in 2015, I got to be a part of an amazing educator retreat, which was led by Maggie Masters. So so much was because of the teachers that I work with, and I'm so thankful to have you guys advocate for teachers each and every day. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. We congratulate you and thank you again for all your hard work that you do for our students. The clerk will call the roll for the members.
Cohen, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Ramos. Madam Vice President, we have a quorum.
We will now proceed with the adoption of the journals.
Madam Vice President, the journal for the October seventh, twenty-twenty-four regular meeting proceedings are on the council member's desk.
Without objection, the journal will be adopted. Hearing none, the journal is adopted. Bill signed by the mayor can be found beginning on page two of the agenda. Executive nominations.
Withdrawn.
Withdraws.
EA two four dash zero two five eight, Latrice Gant, Member, Community Reinvestment and Reparations Commission, District Eight.
This nomination has been withdrawn.
Yeah, that's what she just said. Yeah.
We now turn the bills being introduced. The clerk will read the first bill.
City Council Bill two four dash zero six zero two, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Department of Transportation, twenty-five thousand, for the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation in the amount of twenty-five thousand to the Department of Transportation, Service six nine two, Bridge and Culver Management, to provide funding for bridge assessments and providing for special effective date sponsors the administration.
This bill has been assigned to the Ways and Means Committee, and will have a hearing tomorrow, as noted in the memo on members' desks.
City Council Bill two four dash zero six zero three, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Department of Recreation and Parks, nine hundred and five thousand, for the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation in the aggregate amount of nine hundred and five thousand to the Department of Recreation and Parks, specifically fifty-five thousand to Service six four six, Park Maintenance, to provide funding for playground and court repairs, fifty thousand to Service six four seven, Youth and Adult Sports, to provide capital planning support for Upton Boxing, and eight hundred thousand to Service six four eight, Community Recreation Centers, to expand after-school programming and providing for special effective date sponsors the administration.
This bill has been signed to the Ways and Means Committee. We'll have a hearing tomorrow, as noted in the memo on the members' desks.
City Council Bill two four dash zero six zero four, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Mayor LT, forty-one million, three hundred and fifty-five thousand, for the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation in the aggregate amount of forty-one million, three hundred and fifty-five thousand to the Mayor LT, specifically a hundred thousand to Service one oh nine, Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success Administration, to provide funding for summer programming, thirty-nine million, nine hundred and ninety thousand to Service one two two, miscellaneous general expenses, to provide funding for multi-year purchasing activity, economic development projects, and increase in pay-go capital for recreation and parks and transportation projects, two hundred and fifty thousand to Service one two five, Executive Direction and Control, to provide funding for priority projects, two hundred thousand to Service six one seven, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement, Criminal Justice Coordination, to provide funding for the Human Trafficking Grant Program, five hundred thousand to Service six one eight, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement, Neighborhood Safety and Engagement, to provide funding for increased staff costs, and three hundred and fifteen thousand to Service eight three four, Mayor's Office of Small and Minority Business Advocacy Development, and W, M W B Opportunity Office, to provide funding for increasing funding for Main Streets and providing for a special effective date sponsors the administration.
And this bill has been assigned to the Ways and Means Committee, and will also have a hearing tomorrow, as noted in the memo on members' desks.
City Council Bill two four dash zero six zero five, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Department of Housing and Community Development, three hundred and fifteen thousand, for the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation in the amount of three hundred and fifteen thousand to the Department of Housing and Community Development, Service seven four five, Housing Code Enforcement, to provide funding for additional staffing costs and providing for special effective date sponsors the administration.
And this bill has been assigned to the Ways and Means Committee, and will have a hearing tomorrow, as noted on the, in the memo on the members' desks.
City Council Bill two four dash zero six zero six, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Department of Public Works, six million, for the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation in the amount of six million to the Department of Public Works, Service six six three, Waste Removal and Recycling, to provide funding for solid waste staffing support and providing for a special effective date sponsor the administration.
And this bill has been assigned to the Ways and Means Committee, and will have a hearing tomorrow, as noted in the memo on the members' desks.
City Council Bill two four dash zero six zero seven, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, City Council, five million, two hundred and fifty thousand, for the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation in the amount of five million, two hundred and fifty thousand to the City Council, Service one hundred, City Council, to provide funding for priority projects and providing for a special effective date sponsor administration.
And this bill has been assigned to the Ways and Means Committee, and will have a hearing tomorrow, as noted in the memo on the members' desks.
City Council Bill two four dash zero six zero eight, Rural Property Tax, Affordable and Inclusionary Housing, Mandatory Reporting, for the purpose of requiring the Departments of Housing and Community Development and Planning to submit a joint report to the City Council prior to seeking the approval of the Board of Estimates of an Agreement between the City and an Owner or Owners of a Qualifying Affordable or Inclusionary Housing Development that provides for the payment to the City of a negotiated amount in lieu of the payment of City Rural Property Taxes for a set term of years, sponsor President Mosby.
And this bill has been assigned to the Ways and Means Committee. So the Ways and Means Committee has a busy hearing tomorrow under Chairman Eric Costello. You can find the consent calendar in Section A at the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? All those in favor of approving the consent calendar, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. The motion carries, and the consent calendar is approved. We will now move to bills on second reader. Before we do, I would like to recognize Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Madam President. That has a nice ring to it. I move that we read short titles for second and third reader for the duration of the meeting.
Without objection, we will read short titles for the remainder of the meeting. Hearing none, we will read short titles. Rules and Legislative Oversight.
EA two four dash zero two five five, Eric Jackson, Member, Community Reinvestment and Reparations Commission, District Ten.
Chair Schleifer. Chair recognizes Chair, Chairman Schleifer.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee met on October tenth to hear four nominations for the Community Reinvestment and Reparations Commission, and we're moving all four nominations favorable. So I'd like to move this one favorable.
All those in favor of confirmation, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The recommendation for confirmation is accepted.
EA two four dash zero two five six, Andre Turner, Member, Community Reinvestment and Reparations Commission, District Two.
Chair recognizes Chairman Schleifer.
I'd like to move the nomination favorable.
All those in favor of confirmation, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The recommendation for confirmation is accepted.
EA two four dash zero two five seven, Robert A. Turner, Member, Community Reinvestment and Reparations Commission, District Five.
Chair recognizes Chairman Schleifer.
I move the nomination favorable.
All those in favor of confirmation, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The recommendation for confirmation is accepted.
EA two four dash zero two five nine, Anthony Francis, Member, Community Reinvestment and Reparations Commission, District Nine.
Chair recognizes Chairman Schleifer.
I move the nomination favorable.
All those in favor of confirmation, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The recommendation for confirmation is accepted. Ways and Means.
City Council Bill two four dash zero five two nine, Transit Oriented Development, Wrights Town Plaza Amendment.
Chair recognizes Chair Costello.
Thank you, Madam President. Committee held a hearing on this matter on October fifteenth. I move the bill favorably.
All those in, all those in favor approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. This bill will be printed for third reader.
City Council Bill two four dash zero five three zero, Transit Oriented Development, West Baltimore.
Chair recognizes Chair Costello.
Thank you, Madam President. Committee held a hearing on this matter on October fifteenth. I move the bill favorably.
All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. This bill will be printed for third reader.
City Council Bill two four dash zero five four nine, Zoning, Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R eight zoning district, Variances one thousand two, West Landville Street.
Chair recognizes Chair Costello.
Thank you, Madam President. Committee held a hearing on this matter on October eighth. There are findings of fact on my colleague's desk. At this time, I move the findings of fact.
All those in favor of adopting a finding, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The finding of fact are adopted.
Thank you, Madam President. I move the bill favorably.
All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. This bill will be printed for third reader.
City Council Bill two four dash zero five seven two, Zoning, Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Three Dwelling Units in the R eight zoning district, Variances seventeen thirty, North Broadway.
Chair recognizes Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Madam President. Committee held a hearing on this matter on October eighth. There are findings of fact on my colleague's desk. I move the findings of fact.
All those in favor of adopting a finding of, the findings, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The findings of fact are adopted.
Thank you, Madam President. I move the bill favorably.
All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. This bill will be printed for third reader.
City Council Bill two four dash zero five seven five, City Streets, Closing Certain Streets and Alley's in the Poppleton Urban Renewal Area.
Chair recognizes Chair Costello.
Thank you, Madam President. Committee held a hearing on this matter on October eighth. There are amendments on my colleague's desk. At this time, I move the amendments.
All those in favor of adopting the amendments, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The amendments are adopted.
Thank you, Madam President. I move the bill favorably as amended.
All those in favor of, are there findings of facts?
No.
No? Okay. Are, are those, all those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. This bill will be printed for third reader.
City Council Bill two four dash zero five seven eight, Zoning, Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Three Dwelling Units in the R eight zoning district, twenty-seven thirty-two, Wrights Town Road.
Chair recognizes Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee held a hearing on this matter on October eighth. There are findings of fact on my colleague's desk. I move adoption of the findings of fact.
Thank you for that second. All those in favor of adopting the findings, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The findings of fact are adopted.
Thank you, Madam President. I move the bill favorably.
All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. This bill will be, will be printed for third reading.
City Council Bill two four dash zero five seven nine, Zoning, Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R eight zoning district, Variances five twenty-three, North Calhoun Street.
Chair recognizes Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Madam President. Committee held a hearing on this matter on October eighth. There are findings of fact on my colleague's desk. I move adoption of the findings of fact.
All those in favor of adopting the findings, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The findings of fact are adopted.
Thank you, Madam President. I move the bill favorably.
All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. This bill will, will be printed for third reading.
City Council Bill two four dash zero five eight one, Resoning, two hundred, North Central Avenue.
Chair recognizes Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Madam President. Committee held a hearing on this matter on October eighth. There are amendments on my colleague's desk.
All those, all those in favor of moving the amendments, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The amendments are adopted.
Thank you, Madam President. There are findings of fact on my colleague's desk. I move adoption of the findings of fact.
All those in favor of adopting the findings, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The findings of fact are adopted.
Thank you, Madam President. I move the bill favorably as amended.
All those in favor of approv, oh, need that second. Thank you, Chairman Conway. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading.
City Council Bill two four dash zero five nine two, Zoning, Conditional Use Parking Lot, three oh one East Lombard Street, also known as three hundred East Pratt Street.
Chair recognizes Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee held a hearing on this matter on October fifteenth. There are findings of fact on my colleague's desk. I move adoption of the findings of fact.
All those in favor of adopting the findings, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The findings of fact are adopted.
Thank you, Madam President. I move the bill favorably.
All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. This bill is approved for, for third reader.
City Council Bill two four dash zero five nine three, Ordinance two four dash three six two, Revenue Obligations, Water Projects, repeal and replace.
Chair recognizes Chair Costello.
Thank you, Madam President. Committee held a hearing on this matter on October fifteenth. I move the bill favorably.
All those in favor of adopting a finding, say aye.
Point and border, Madam President, or, there's no, there's no find, this is the revenue obligations one, so there's no.
So we're just approving the bill?
Yeah, just approving the bill. So I move, I move the bill favorably, and I think there was a second.
All those in favor of approving the bill, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. This bill will be printed for third reading.
City Council Bill two four dash zero five nine six, Sale of Property, fourteen hundred, Letton Hall Street.
Chair recognizes Chairman Costello.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee held a hearing on this matter. We did vote to approve the bill, but due to additional circumstances, it requires the bill to return to the committee. Accordingly, I move Council Rule ten dash thirteen to return the bill to committee.
All, is there a second? Thank you. All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. This bill will return to committee for further proceedings. Okay, bills for third reading. We return now to bills on third reading for final passage. The clerk will read the bills and call the roll.
City Council Bill two four dash zero five five two, Zoning, Commercial, One Village Center District, Conditional Use Retail Goods Establishment with Alcoholic Beverage Sales, Variances sixty-two forty-two, Bellona Avenue, Cohen, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Burnett, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Ramos.
This bill is approved.
City, oh, City Council Bill two four dash zero five eight five, Supplementary Special Revenue Fund Operating Appropriation, Miscellaneous General Expenses, two million, one hundred and sixty-five thousand.
He said it's not going to pass. It's not twelve. Well, it's, it's twelve. No, we got eleven. We have eleven. It's not going to pass. Yeah, we have eleven.
Elena DePietro, or, did you want to be invited up, or Michelle? Okay, we're going to take a five-minute recess. We're just trying to make sure we confirm the number of votes for supplementals, so we want to make sure we get that right. So before we move on to the next thing, I just want to confirm that the vote that we took is a solid vote with a simple majority. And so now we're able to proceed and, so we're going to just read it in and do it over again, just to make sure it is solid.
City Council Bill two four dash zero five eight five, Supplementary Special Revenue Fund Operating Appropriation, Miscellaneous General Expenses, two million, one hundred and sixty-five thousand, Cohen, Dorsey, Conway, Schleifer, Middleton, Torrance, Bullock, Costello, Stokes, Ramos.
This bill is approved. Before we move to committee announcements, I recognize Councilmen of the third district.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I really hate to have to be standing here right now. At the October seventh meeting of the council, we voted on an erroneously drafted copy of Council Bill twenty-three oh three six seven, the bill to prohibit the use of gas-powered debris removal devices. This came as the result of a clerical error beyond our control on the second reader version of the bill. And so the bill that we passed on third reader is not properly constituted such that it would be legal for the mayor to sign the bill. It reflects all of the intent of what we voted on here, as a committee amendment on second reader, a floor amendment on second reader, and another floor amendment on third reader, but it was not properly constituted due to a clerical mishap. In order to straighten this out... In order to straighten this out, the bill needs to be recalled from the mayor's desk and properly legally amended. And this requires a simple majority of the council, and as you can see here tonight, we have ten members here, three of whom voted against the bill. And so, to you three, I am speaking when I say I'm appealing to you to simply support us undertaking what is a bureaucratic process at this point, to be able to recall this bill from the mayor's desk and amend it to properly move it again to third reader for the next council meeting. So, Madam Chair, um, I move under Council Rule 13-3 to reconsider the vote and recall the bill from the mayor's desk. Can I ask for a second?
So we have a motion on the floor to recall the bill, and we have a second. Um, there, there is a motion that has been properly second. All those in favor of recalling the bill, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and this bill is recalled, and it's now on third reader. Councilman Dorsey, the floor is still yours.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. There is an amendment in your package that strikes the bill as it was and rewrites the bill as we believed to have passed it on third reader. I move this motion, Madam President.
So we have a motion on the floor to substitute the bill. Is there a second? Chair recognizes Councilmember Costello.
So I'm not sure as to who is responsible for the mistake that led us to where we're at in this juncture. And that said, while I am vehemently opposed to this legislation, I did think it appropriate to extend the courtesy to my colleague from the third district to not kill this bill, which is what the no votes that are in the council this evening could have done. We could have killed this bill, but we chose not to as a courtesy. That being said, uh, I am not comfortable in any way, shape, or form voting on an amendment that is now on our desk that we have not had time to review, considering the previous, uh, situation that led us to where we were at today. So, uh, in response, I would ask the, uh, councilman from the third district to make an appropriate motion to table this matter until the next council meeting, to at least afford us an opportunity to fully review, uh, not only the amendment that corrects the situation that the councilman just described, but also affords us an opportunity to review an interlineated version of the bill so that we fully understand what we're voting on today. Thank you, Madam President.
So, uh, councilmember, there's a suggestion on the floor?
Yeah, um... I understand the reticence. There is an interlineated version of the bill in the folder right now as well that shows exactly what we're voting on, and because the bill and the, because the amendment literally strikes the entire bill and rewrites it exactly as it looked when we voted it on third reader. There's not a word difference from what is in that amendment and what is in that redraft than what was voted on third reader.
I recognize, uh, Councilmember Costello.
Thank you, Madam President. If there's not a word different, then perhaps the councilman from the third district could explain procedurally how we've run afoul and what leads us to amend the bill by eliminating the whole bill and rewriting it.
Councilman Dorsey.
What happened was that when the bill was presented to the full council on second reader, there was an amendment that had been voted favorable by the HET committee, and there was a floor amendment that I introduced pursuant to a conversation that had taken place during committee. Commensurately, there should have been a document for each of those two amendments in the zip file that we get as the floor documents for the council meeting on the night that it was on second reader. What actually happened was that instead of the committee amendment and the floor amendment, there were two copies of the floor amendment in that folder and no copy of the committee amendment. And so, despite the fact that the chair moved the committee amendment and the floor amendment, the only things that we actually had before us were two copies of the floor amendment. And so if you look at the journal entry from the following council meeting, it says that the committee amendment was the floor amendment, and the floor amendment was the floor amendment. And so what we all believed we were voting on as the second reader amendment wasn't actually before us. Despite that, when it was redrafted then for third reader, the committee amendments that we believed we were voting on were incorporated into it. And then that erroneously drafted third reader version is then what was further amended when we amended the bill on third reader. So it's simply that the committee amendment that we believed we were voting on had not actually been placed in the documents in front of us, and we didn't notice that. And so everything that was what we believed we were voting on on third reader is actually correct, but it just hadn't been legally constituted because we didn't have that one document formally in front of us when we believed we were voting on it.
Chair recognizes Costello and then, um, Councilmember Torrance.
Thank you, Madam President. So, to confirm what the councilman from the third district is saying is that the desk agenda that was provided to us by the executive secretary had two copies of one amendment and zero copies of the other amendment at the time of the vote. Is that correct? Thank you. Um, Madam President, if, if there are no other members that, uh, voiced the concern that I raised, I'm certainly willing to concede that recommendation for the councilman's consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Torrance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to confirm with the sponsor. So, the amendments that we have today will include the compromise between myself and you and then Chairman Conway, which would remove the criminal penalty, and then the second amendment by Chairman Conway that would provide a similar timeline for everyone to be the same.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, uh, Councilman Dorsey.
Madam Vice President, I have a motion on the floor to move the amendments before the council.
Uh, Chair recognizes Councilmember, um, Schleifer.
So can we just clarify, are we, we're voting on the amendments and the bill, or? The entire, the entire bill?
The amendments would alter the bill as a second reader version essentially, and it will be held over for third reader passage.
On the floor to substitute the bill. Is that correct?
To take the...
We need a second for it to substitute the bill first. We have to go through that procedure first. And then we're gonna have another motion to amend the bill. Chair recognizes Councilmember Costello.
Thank you, Madam President. Just as a point of order, the council has taken one action so far today, which is to recall this bill from the mayor's desk back to Mr. Swift. Is this correct, third reader? So the bill is currently on third reader in the council, and now the councilman has made a motion to...
amend the bill here on third reader.
Okay.
With the amendment that strikes the bill and puts in all the text that we believed that we had voted on previously.
So I need a second to substitute the bill first, and then I'll put amendment on the... We're skipping the whole substitution piece. Gotcha. Okay. We have a motion on the floor to amend the bill. Is there a second? There is a, um, there is a motion that has been properly second. All those in favor of adopting the amendments to this bill, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes will do a roll call. Yes.
Cohen? Dorsey? Conway? Schleifer?
Chair recognizes Schleifer, Councilman Schleifer.
Yeah, so, um, you know, on the, on the initial motion, uh, I, I echo my colleague, uh, from the 11th district's sentiments that trying to... Obviously mistakes happen and there's clerical errors, and so therefore wanted to extend the courtesy to our colleague because this bill did, uh, in fact pass at a previous council meeting, so not to change the outcome because there are multiple members absent, um, so wanted to extend that courtesy to allow it to come back. Uh, but, you know, I've, I've been clear in my position. I've, I've been opposed to it, and I feel like voting on this now that I'm somehow being asked to supplement my no vote, which I've been consistently a no vote on this bill, um, to change that because other members are absent, I think is unfair. And so, you know, my preference was to table this and, you know, when the full council's here to have a revote, but I'm gonna remain a no on this.
Middleton?
Yes.
Torrance? Bullock? Costello? Stokes? Ramos?
Seven? We only have 10 and 7. We only have 10 and 7.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
I believe the bill is still before the council and still eligible to be amended at the next council meeting.
Parliamentarian? Is that correct? Okay.
I believe, I believe that this places it on third reader.
Okay, this, um, bill will now be held over for third reader at the next meeting of the city council. And the amendment will not be adopted at this time? All right. Uh, committee announcements. Chairs, when you hear your committee, please proceed with your committee announcements. Any announcements for a committee of the whole? Uh, there's no announcements for economic and community development, education, workforce, and youth. Uh, none for health, environment, and technology. Uh, public safety and government operations. Chair, Chair recognizes Councilmember Conway.
Thank you, Madam, um, Vice, Madam President. Um, the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee, excuse me, uh, uh, would like to waive, um, Rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing.
Yes.
No. I move to waive Rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing.
All in favor, say aye.
Uh, thank you. The Public Safety and Government Operations Committee will meet Wednesday, October 23rd at 1:05 PM, uh, to hear legislative oversight, uh, underground infrastructure safety, and this is gonna be focused on the Charles Street fire. That's all we have for today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rules and, uh, legislative oversight. Ways and Means. I know we have plenty.
Sure do, Madam President. Madam President, uh, move to suspend Rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing.
All in favor? Say aye. Proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. Before I announce this one, because I have five more, these are the supplementary, um, appropriation bills that you referenced earlier in, in the meeting. Um, they are all for tomorrow. Uh, tomorrow, the larger item that's on our agenda is the vacancy tax modifications. We're gonna hear these supplementary, uh, appropriations before that just because there's gonna be more testimony associated with the other one. So the committee will hear at 10:01 AM on October 22nd, Council Bill 24-0602, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Department of Transportation, the amount of $25,000. Madam President? Oh. Madam President, I move to suspend Rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing.
All in favor? Say aye. Oppose? Proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. Committee will hear Council Bill 24-0603, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Department of Recreation, Parks, in the amount of $905,000 on Tuesday, October 22nd at 10:02 AM. Madam President, I move to suspend Rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, October 22nd at 10:03 AM. Council Bill 24-0604, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Mayor Ality, $41,355,000. Madam President, I move to suspend Rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. Ways and Means Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, October 22nd at 10:04 AM on Council Bill 24-0605, Supplementary General Fund Operations Appropriation, Department of Housing and Community Development, in the amount of $315,000. Madam President, I move to suspend Rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, October 22nd at 10:05 AM on Council Bill 24-0606, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Department of Public Works, in the amount of $6 million. Madam President, I move to suspend Rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, October 22nd at 10:06 AM. Council Bill 24-0607, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriations, City Council, in the amount of $5,250,000. Madam President, I move to suspend Rule 10-2 to announce a hearing.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, the committee will hold a hearing on November 19th at 10:00 AM on Council Bill 24-0599, Zoning Conditional Use Crematorium. Uh, this was previously scheduled for October 29th at 9:59 AM. Uh, Madam President, uh, the committee will also hold a hearing on November 19th at 10:01 AM on Council Bill 24-0587, Zoning Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Four Dwelling Units in the RE zoning district, Variance 1817 North Broadway. Madam President, I move to suspend Rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. The Ways and Means Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, November 12th at 10:09 AM on Council Bill 24-0608, Real Property Tax Affordable and Inclusionary Housing Mandatory Reporting. And finally, Madam President, uh, the committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, November 12th at 10:08 AM on City Council Bill 24-0597, City Property Renaming Riverside Park Pool to the Congressman Elijah E. Cummings Community Pool. A green slip announcement was not required for this one. We did call the hearing to order, as you recall, Madam President, during the committee hearing. during the committee hearing last week, but just wanted to put that on the record. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Finance and performance? No announcements? Regular announcements? We move now to regular announcements. Members, please wait to be recognized to make any regular announcements. And we'll start with Councilwoman Ramos of the fourteenth district.
Thank you, Madam President and colleagues. My district experienced a horrible loss on last Tuesday. There was a massive fire on the thirty-four and thirty-five-hundred block of Keswick Road where we lost two residents. And all ten families in the other houses were displaced. So, I'd like a moment of silence for Kathy and Matt Schmely, who perished in the fire. Thank you.
Any other announcements? Bless you. I'd just like to make a note from, a suggestion from the parliamentarian earlier in the meeting. Just a note for councilmembers. As I sit in the president's chair, I know you love me as your VP, Vice President. But as I sit in the chair, he had noted that I'm to be announced as President, Madam President. So, just keep that in mind as we move forward. The next, I recognize Councilman Schleifer.
The next regular meeting of the Baltimore City Council will be held on Monday, November fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, at five P.M. At this time, we will recognize a moment of silence for the one hundred and sixty-one victims of homicide this year, as well as Kathy and Matt Schmely, who unfortunately perished this past week in a fire.
Thank you. There being no further business, this concludes the eighty-sixth regular meeting of the seventy-third term of the Baltimore City Council.